I would like to call the Monday, August 26, 2024, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening and for those watching from home, tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the minutes from the August 12, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting; Items 2, 3, and 4, rezoning, general development plan and preliminary plat for Flex Spaces Phase 2; Item 5, site plan design review for small sliders; Item 6, announcements; and Item 7, adjournment. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the August 12, 2024 meeting minutes.
I move to amend the minutes from August 12 to reflect what was accurately discussed during the meeting. I'm going to vote no to not approve the minutes because of what is being attempted to be recorded today is inaccurate. The correct information was not cited, which is relevant and material to the matter at hand. Our purpose is to provide transparency so that there isn't an accurate reflection of detail. During the prior discussion, I posed a question concerning that I believe we have a prior, we had prior conversations about having too many fast food places and also payday loan companies in one area. I did not state there were too many in the city as a whole, as you stated in the minutes today. It seems like time and time again, the minutes are not accurately recorded. I've served up here for a while now and I realize it's hard to capture what you summarize, but there is a better way to demonstrate what we are doing and we want to do our very best. And there is software out there that we can, how we can accomplish this. I know this meeting was recorded, however, I think there is a less arduous way to retrieve detailed information than having to watch an entire recorded video. I believe we should consider how we prepare the minutes from a summary approach to a word-for-word transcripts of the recording or at least come close. With all due respect, in retrospect to the past, details seem to be recorded more efficiently as I recall. I know staff is working very hard and sometimes things are lost. I also realize it's sometimes difficult to get a recording wire of our public servants to support our community. But the fact of the matter is, it's still necessary to get accurate detailed information because so many of our businesses and citizens are affected by what this body does and accuracy counts. Because of that reason, I will be voting no to approve the minutes.
Sure, appreciate your comments. Any thoughts? One more? Any discussion? I would still entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For those in favor, say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
That motion carries. I will open the public hearing for Agenda Items 2, 3, and 4, rezoning, RZ 07249217, General Development Plan, GDP 07249218, for Flex Spaces Phase 2, with Items 4 held concurrently. I will ask exhibits from our city attorney, John Mullein.
Staff admits exhibits 1 through 8 under Items 2 and 3 as shown on the agenda.
Thank you. All those who wish to speak, please stand and be sworn in as a group. Thank you. At this time, I will ask for staff's presentation.
Alright, good evening. Dave McCumber, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you is a planning application for a rezoning, general development plan with an alternative development standard and a preliminary plat. The project is called Flex Spaces located at 3405 Northwest Jefferson Street. It spans across 4.19 acres and consists of two lots. Currently, the property is zoned LI and GB, which are Light Industrial and General Business. For this project, it's proposed to change to LI Light Industrial completely. The LI Light Industrial District is intended to primarily accommodate industries that produce finished products from semi-finished materials and require little to no outside storage of materials. The district provides locations for limited manufacturing and industrial activities with limited land use impacts. Primarily, traffic is generated by delivery vehicles and employees. The applicant has indicated that the proposed development will utilize the existing land use, storage, residential warehouse that exists to the north at the original Flex Spaces development, located on Northwest Duncan Road, along with office and retail land uses. However, the LI District does allow additional permitted land uses that can range from commercial to light industrial in nature and of different intensities. Properties to the north and the east of the development retain the LI zoning designation and feature a mix of light industrial land uses, while those to the south and west have general business zoning and feature hotel, vehicle repair, and bar or tavern land uses. The comprehensive plan designates this area as a neighborhood center and thus defined as a mix of neighborhoods serving retail that provides for a daily and weekly needs of surrounding neighborhoods and supporting services, offices, and neighborhood compatible institutional uses. This area may include residential uses and formats to support the principal retail uses in the area or serve as a transition to the adjacent neighborhoods. Neighborhood centers rely on a compact, walkable, or park once format and connections and transitions to adjacent neighborhoods and other supporting land uses are critical. Furthermore, the in-one-area plan of the comprehensive plan defines this specific site as office or small-scale multi-unit housing. Staff has reviewed the criteria for an amendment to the official zoning map and considered the comprehensive plan and requirements of the UDC and recommends approval of the rezoning request from GB and LI to LI.
Thank you. Sorry.
Alright, the proposed land use, as mentioned before, is storage, residential warehouse, office, and retail. The proposed site, uh, site plan shows buildings A and B located near the center of the Flex Spaces development, which will likely be where the storage residential warehouse and office land uses will be located. Buildings C, D, and E, which front Northwest Jefferson Street and include more modern architecture such as corrugated metal siding, composite wood accents, and floor-to-ceiling front windows will likely be occupied by office and/or retail land uses. The building type being used here on the development is a general industrial building type, which is permitted in the LI Light Industrial District. All proposed buildings meet the general industrial building type standards except for Building E, uh, which is the only, um, uh, alternative development standard that's being requested here. We'll get into in just a moment. Here's kind of a look at each of the building's elevations, including a sample picture of, um, kind of some of those materials that will make up of each of those buildings. Um, uh, very similar if not exact to the original Flex Spaces development up there on Duncan Road. So, um, Buildings A, um, looking down at Building B. These are going to be the units that will, um, lend themselves more to the residential warehouse land use with the garage doors and being more centralized in the site. Um, Building A has no plumbing inside of it at all. Um, Building B does have some for some small office spaces. And then making your way out towards Jefferson where you see Buildings C, D, and E. Here is C here with the, um, kind of the floor-to-ceiling glazing across the frontage. Buildings D, and finally, Building E. Buildings E rear setback is proposed for an eight-foot minimum from the building face to the north property line, which is shared by this development and another light industrial land use. Because of the alignment of Northwest Jefferson Street, which narrows the east end of the site, meeting the applicable development standards including buffers, drive aisles, parking setbacks, and so on, is rather complicated. For the applicant to fit in an appropriate building on this end of the site, it was determined that the landscape buffer, drive aisles, and parking standards were priorities to maintain over the rear setback distance to the north property line. A development of this nature features tenant spaces that lend themselves to a mix of land uses and may be best addressed with a Schedule C off-street parking study. This applicant has provided a study in the project narrative that analyzes the demand of the original Flex Spaces located at 3401 Northwest Duncan Road. That original development shares the same characteristics in terms of land uses as this proposed development. Accounting for the proposed building square footage and likely tenant mix, the applicant has determined that 62 off-street parking spaces would be sufficient. Furthermore, the applicant has also indicated that up to 12 parking spaces would be provided within Building A for leasing, for those leasing the units. A public sidewalk will be provided along Northwest Jefferson Street from the property's east to west boundary, making a significant connection to existing sidewalks on either end. This will complete an important gap in the existing sidewalk system along Northwest Jefferson Street. A single access point on Northwest, a single access point on Northwest Jefferson Street will be provided for this project with the north side of the site being connected to the original Flex Spaces development that has a driveway connection on Northwest Duncan Road. Based on traffic volumes and anticipated trip generation, a traffic memo was not required for this development. The original Flex Spaces development included a dry stormwater detention basin with extra capacity to handle future expansion if needed. The engineer for this proposed development has indicated that the stormwater needs for the development will be met by use of the existing facility. The applicant has also indicated that a master alternative sign plan will be applied for to identify sign types for the development to complement the architectural features of the project and create consistency across the site. The signs, signs that are, um, provided in this general development plan are only illustrative at this point. Along Northwest Jefferson Street, the development will provide the buffer edge frontage type, which is defined as a concentrated and heavily landscaped and/or bermed open area used to separate the site and any potential impacts of the development and site design from the streetscape or adjacent lots. Furthermore, the Jefferson Street frontage and a small portion of the west property line will require a minimum 15-foot wide landscape buffer consisting of 45 plant units per 100 linear feet. The remaining property lines abut LI zoning and do not require this same landscape buffer. Landscaping requirements, including plant units, will be reviewed in greater detail during the site plan design review process with the final landscape plan. Staff has reviewed the criteria of a general development plan, alternative development standard, and preliminary plat and is recommending approval of the general, general development plan with an alternative development standard and six conditions and a preliminary plat with five conditions. Conditions have been listed at the end of the staff report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions? Would the applicant like to step up and speak? Remind you to, uh, please state your name and your address.
Yes, Patrick Joyce, 436 Northeast Brockton Drive in Lee's Summit. Thank you very much. Um, I'm the civil engineer. Uh, also with me today is Matthew Hendrickson. He is the owner of Elevated Ventures Group, you know, developer on this project. Dave? He just needs to load up our, uh, little short presentation. He did a great job covering almost everything, stole almost everything I was going to say, so very thorough, thank you. That's basically what I was just talking about, our architect, also Jacob Latell from, uh, Latrell from 621. Next slide, please. Okay, just a, just a quick bit, maybe something they didn't cover and I hope if I go over here that everybody can see my pointer. Sorry, maybe I can show you over there. This, um, this is the base, this is basically what's out there today. You see, as Dave mentioned, this is, uh, Phase 2 of, uh, of an existing facility, a similar facility out there. Next slide. This is, there's some pictures of Phase 1. Sometimes those elevations don't necessarily do it great justice, but this is, the idea is more or less match what this is. And then also, as, uh, Dave mentioned, we're looking at, um, you know, increasing it, making it look a lot more retail-ish as we go south to do a transition to the businesses to the south. You'll also notice, um, on the south side, there, you know, some pictures looking in. There's an old shed right there, uh, old house right there, uh, as well as a large existing asphalt parking lot that's just kind of there. All that stuff's being removed with this development, so it's going to kind of clean up, clean up that area. That's a better picture of the, that's the site looking west, northwest. You can see that big asphalt parking lot that's, again, just, just kind of there. So, next one, please. There's our building orientation, A, B, C, D, E, just like so. Couple little points of note, um, like Dave mentioned, we do have a detention basin that's out there that was sized to do this. We did that with the original, um, Phase 1. Uh, also, we're, we're connecting, we're connecting Phase 2 to Phase 1 with a couple of connections up here. Um, this is going to be one-way traffic through here and, uh, we've got a little circulation area where potentially some larger trailers could back up and have some more, uh, dock doors up in there. We've got some green space here for a sanitary sewer that kind of looks like a T through, as it goes through the site. Also, a little, little teeny retain, little retaining wall on the front side, less than four foot tall, so pretty nondescript and our main access there to Jefferson. So, next slide. Okay, that's, this is landscaping, which obviously we already covered, so I won't go back into that again. And then the same, the same elevations that you saw and I think that's, that's kind of the rest of it, unless you guys want to see that again, but, um, other than that, that's kind of, that's kind of the presentation. We're happy to, uh, stand for any questions and, uh, we're also in agreement with the stipulations. Yeah, and Matt would also have, like to have a quick word.
State your name and address, please.
Matt Hendrickson, 1507 Northeast Wall Street in Lee's Summit. I just wanted to mention, uh, specific to Phase 1 are our learnings and how it's translating to Phase 2. Phase 1 was a 34,000 square foot, um, uh, between two buildings that we found good success with, uh, and tenants, uh, we've learned, the thesis going in was that, you know, tenants wanted flexible uses and flexible lease lengths, more friendly for the startup environment. And, uh, that's what we've captured in Phase 1 was, uh, two months after completion, 100% occupancy. And that was, um, a lot of uses ranging from what I call sweaty startups or blue collar businesses to, um, micro retail uses, uh, like a barber or soft tissue, um, type, uh, tenants and physical therapy, things like that. And Phase 2 is capturing some of that, but also allowing some of these tenants and new tenants to expand in a similar concept with, uh, more flexible terms and flexible uses. And so, um, uh, I've appreciated working with Blue Springs and, um, and, uh, look forward to another successful phase of this project, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the project? Alright, the public comments section of this hearing?
Chair?
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to ask the applicant a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Could you tell me, your, your original Flex Spaces seem to be doing very well. It looks very nice over there. You guys are keeping it up. And the businesses that you have there, they're different blue collar businesses and so forth, like you mentioned. Do you know what type of businesses are coming in for your next project? And the reason why I ask that because it appears that some of your businesses are a little busy sometimes and the parking spaces seem to vary when people go in and then out of there. And I can see where it can kind of get a little bit busy sometimes. However, you accommodate the parking spaces and plan on having any accommodation for ADA for, um, disabilities, parking like that, because some of the businesses seem to be pretty active.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, I think specifically we have one or two high parking use tenants in our first phase, particularly a barber that's there drives a lot of vehicular traffic. Aside from, from peak hours, um, we've, we've managed the parking pretty well, uh, as we've audited it. We have camera systems, so we watch it closely, you know, we, we have, um, generally excess spaces available. However, in the front half on Phase 1 is probably where we're, what you're seeing is a lot of congestion due to that specific tenant placement and the traffic that they're driving. And so, um, as it relates to Phase 2, uh, we have provided more parking in some of those more retail-esque areas along Jefferson for that specific reason, uh, as we anticipate similar tenants, um, that, that do need a little bit more reception of clientele and the availability of vehicular parking and whatnot. And so, um, that's, that's what we're trying to capture there along Jefferson Street. I'm trying to remember if I answered all your questions. Let me know if I didn't.
I spoke about the ADA.
Oh, ADA, yes, thank you. Yes, we are providing all ADA, um, uh, parking and ramping requirements. And Patrick can correct or maybe better answer that one myself, but...
Do you have that in your original Flex Spaces? Are there ADA?
Yes, we do. Uh-huh, yeah. Uh-huh, along the west side, um, of the west building.
What about the east side? Are they on that side?
The east building is, is an S1 occupancy, so it's more storage. Um, all of our restrooms inside each unit are ADA, uh, they meet ADA requirements. And, um, I believe that the, uh, you know, from a pavement standpoint on the east building, the, the slope and whatnot meet ADA requirements. But we don't have any stripe parking along the east side of Phase 1. It's all on the west side, which is where we have our handicap stalls.
So I guess my question would be for staff and, uh, is that a requirement for a business such as, I think you mentioned you have a barber shop there and that you may have more tenants that are occupying or patronizing your business. Is there a requirement that you should have ADA parking if you have that type of business?
ADA accessible parking is, uh, based upon the overall number of parking spaces being provided for the site. And so, uh, if there are X, you know, I think it's between 0 and 25 parking spaces, then one ADA accessible space is required. Uh, between 25 and 50 parking spaces required, then there are two ADA accessible spaces provided. And those are the, uh, ADA standards that are in the, uh, building codes applicable to the property. Uh, our Unified Development Code simply, um, refers to the, um, adopted building codes. So, the number of ADA parking spaces is based upon the overall number of parking spaces required for that property.
So my understanding, there should be at least one?
There should be at least one for, for all of Flex Spaces on the north side, yeah. And I'm guessing that there is.
We have two, yeah.
Where is, where is it specifically on the north side?
It's in the northwest corner. If you're able to, I'm not sure of this slide.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this, this would be...
I didn't see any, I didn't see any markings or any lines or anything like that. That's why I asked.
There's, there's two signs there. I, yeah, this is unrelated to this project.
This is unrelated to the application we have this evening other than to ask if everything from the first one is going to be carried through to the second one. If that's what you're proposing, is that the same style, same use, same way it's handled? Uh, then parking, then your question, Commissioner, seems like would there be additional parking spaces being provided above and beyond what the code would require? If that, if I'm paraphrasing your code. So, that would be a question for, for the applicant.
Yeah, we, we, uh, for the new, for the new parking, we've got 62 stalls, uh, three of which are going to be ADA. And they're shown, um, you can see the two right there south of Building C and D and then you got, uh, one over there on the east side of Building E.
I see. Well, I, I think you've got a great business over there and I can see it's, as you expand, it's going to get busier. We definitely want to accommodate the ADA parking spaces for people with disabilities because we often forget about them, but I'm glad to hear you, you're putting something there.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd just also like to point out that, um, in the original or in the, uh, Flex Spaces that's currently constructed, when we, when we got to the site plan design review phase, and this could be something we look at when we get to that phase as well, there was a condition placed in the staff report that said no required vehicle parking spaces could be used for outside storage. And so, that was one of our concerns as well. Um, we have some other storage units, um, and garage, kind of this niche storage unit, man cave type incubator business space. And, uh, we had had some problems with some of those turning into areas where boats and lawnmowers and things get stored. So, that's why we put that condition in the Flex Space first one and that's something we will continue to look for or continue to work with the applicant as to how to massage that for this plan as it's a little bit different than the other one. But just to make sure that, uh, we, uh, make sure that that's still being accounted for, that's something we'll work for with the site plan design review because, um, the parking concerns have come up now a few times on this.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other discussion from the staff? Uh, any further discussion from the applicant?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. Any discussion from the commission? I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve rezoning, RZ 07249217 for Flex Spaces Phase 2.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. This will be a roll call.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Yep.
Commissioner Pumphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stockenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Hough?
Aye. Thank you. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Tuesday, September 3, 2024, meeting at 6:00 PM. I will ask for a motion on the general development plan.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve general development plan, GDP 07249218, Flex Spaces Phase 2 with the six staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This will also be a roll call.
Commissioner Pumphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stockenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hough?
Aye. This item will, uh, is passed and this item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Tuesday, September 3, 2024, meeting at 6:00 PM. May I ask for a motion on the preliminary plat?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve preliminary plat, PP 07249219, Flex Spaces Phase 2 with the five staff conditions.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. For all those in favor, please, did I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried with the six staff conditions. Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, item number five. Uh, the plan design review, SP, uh, DR 07249221 for small sliders. At this time, I'll ask for staff presentation, please.
So before you this evening is a request for a site plan design review for the development of small sliders, restaurant, drive-through, outdoor seating area, which is going to be located at the southwest corner of Mo-7 Highway and south of Northwest Mok Avenue. The property is now zoned as a general business district and the site is currently occupied by two... by two vacant commercial buildings, which will be torn down prior to the start of the construction of the Small Sliders. Once development, once the developed lot is all developed, there will be more landscaping and green space than what has existed before. The development will include a nine-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot building, which will include a drive-thru outdoor seating area and the associated parking. The proposed development meets all the requirements and complies with the non-residential guidelines, and the overall design of the site will be distinctly modern, utilizing a one-time-use shipping containers as the primary structural elements. The top shipping container is empty and will not be utilized, and the containers will be left with their metal surfaces exposed, which will be painted in the branded color palette of the midnight bronze and Smalls orange. The development will utilize the two existing access points, one being located to the east side of the property, and then one being located to the north side of the property, which will connect to South Outer Road. The internal pedestrian access will be provided along the exterior footprint of the building. There will be parking bollards placed to create a protection barrier between the parking stalls and the outdoor seating area. There, the applicant, or the development is going to be having a total of fifteen stalls, one being an ADA, and there will be a twenty-five stacking into the drive-thru, which is their primary source of business. The, the development will use the existing concrete ditches for the mitigation of the stormwater, which is already placed on site. A landscape plan has been provided and meets all the requirements per the U D C, and all buffer requirements have been met. There will be a placement of a six-foot privacy fence on the south and west property boundaries. This fence will be double-sided to mitigate some of the noise and light pollution from the headlights from the drive-thru. There will be significant landscaping along the west and southwest property to help screen the headlights and all, also soften the visibility of the fence. The applicant provided a photometric plan, and the lighting will be reviewed further in detail with the building permit, being that we can't see lights right now. All roof-mounted and ground-level equipment shall be completely screened from view, roof screens, ground-level screens, and enclosures, when used, shall be coordinated with the building to maintain a unified appearance. And all signs that meet the sign code will be reviewed administratively and must follow the appropriate permitting process. The applicant's general development plan was approved with the alternative development standard, which allows a reduction in landscape buffer along Mo Seven Highway and the southwest property line. Staff recommends approval of the site plan design with the four conditions stated in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, does the commission have any questions?
Yes, sir. Could you reiterate whether, you may have mentioned it, what are the hours of operation?
That would be a question the applicant can...
Just one second, please, any other questions from the, the commission? Yes, sir.
Traffic flow, turning on to, not on Seven Highway, but to, uh, Mock, thank you. Is it going to be right turn only, or are we gonna have people sitting there trying to turn left to go west on South Outer?
I, I can address that.
Okay.
Absolutely, so, any, any, any other questions to the commissioners? All right, thank you. Applicant, we, would you please step up and make comments, and please state your name and address for the record, please?
I am Randy Purdue with Call Valley Engineering, twenty-three nineteen North Jackson Junction City, Kansas. So, the immediate entrance that exists on South Outer currently is part of a MoDOT project to be closed, and that's what's being represented here. It's not actually part of our project, but to answer your question, Mock Road, you're gonna have to go up to the A Crossing, I don't actually know what that street is called off the top of my head. But so, the entrance, as you know it currently on South Outer Road, will not be, the entrance exit will not exist any further, but that is not part of our project, that we are not conducting that, uh, MoDOT is with their project plan, so.
Okay.
So one would have to go up and do a U-turn to go back in, or?
Well, so currently, it all exists right there across from opposite of Waterburgers in, entrance, I don't know your town good enough to know if that is actually a street with a name, or if it's strictly, there you go, okay, so it's considered Northwest Mock Avenue, but, but yeah, so you'll be able to take from our site, up Mock, and then hang a right, and then hang a right onto Outer, or if you're coming from Outer, you'll be able to turn, using city streets to get to our site now, yes.
Commissioner, did you have a question? Go ahead, please, state.
Yeah, if you wanna come, I do not know that answer.
What were the hours of operation?
Yeah, my name's Mark Peretta, twenty-six oh nine Northeast Hunter Walk Trail, Blue Springs, Missouri, ten to ten, ten A M. to ten P M.
Ten A M. to ten P M.
To ten P M., yes.
So, is it correct for me to understand that you're still waiting for a traffic study to be finished by MoDOT, you mentioned?
No, the, the work depicted on that other sheet is work by MoDOT. The, the upgrades to South Outer Road, they're adding a turn lane, and they are opening up Mock Road.
It's currently dead end.
Yeah, it's currently dead end, it blocked off there. Part of their project is to add some storm sewer and to open that entrance up, and it, not so much open that up as much as close the entrance exit that currently exists, and so then in order to do that, they had to give you the alternative route, which is Mock Avenue, but yeah, that has nothing to do with our project. Now, we have conducted a traffic report study, and it has been provided to MoDOT as part of the requirements for their request, it was not an in-depth study, it was, was what I would consider to be a traffic report, which is a documentation of what our projected traffic is, what the existing traffic are, just so they can review and make sure we're not affecting the operations, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
I would ask for a motion on the site plan design review.
Oh, I just don't know what to say.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to approve site plan design review, S P D R zero-seven-two-four-nine-two-two-one for Small Sliders with the four staff conditions.
Thank you, sir, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carried with four staff conditions. That'll move us to agenda item number five announcements. Does staff have any other business for us?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you, sir. Does the commission have any other business?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mellon, did you ever do any research into what the chair asked about the amendment for a prior meeting, that we're gonna go back and look at some things to see if there needed to be amendment? And you guys were gonna get back to us on that?
See if we needed to go back and amend something?
We brought up an issue about some things that, that were left out of the minutes, and, and the chair suggested that you go back and look at the video to see if there was, that discussion had occurred.
We were not able to do that this time, and we will do, look into doing that for the next meeting.
Okay. And another thing, I know in the past year, you mentioned that if we had free time, we didn't have meetings that were gonna be so long, we could talk about some issues of concern for the commissioners, what they may, may have, and they might wanna discuss with you, have you figured out when we could, that could take place, or is that something we should do after the meetings, like, like now, or what do you suggest?
Yeah, I think if we were to have a, now that we have a full planning commission for the first time in a while, I think it would be advantageous of us if we find ourselves with a light agenda or no agenda to have some items open for topic discussion, and also to probably go through a refresher of the training that we did back in twenty-nineteen and, and do another one of those in terms of the development code and the different development applications and the criteria used in reviewing those, so I think that's something we can certainly look at, and I will connect with the chair to see how he would like to go about soliciting ideas of topics to bring up at the, at a meeting, should we have, when we have time, and also we'll continue to keep our eye out for, you know, planning commission meeting dates where we don't have something submitted for that, and we will keep you updated as to when we may have availability for that, and we've had kind of a, a full agenda over the past couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any other business? If there is no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Settle it, thank you. This meeting is adjourned, good night.